It's April 6, 2020, 6:00 PM. Welcome to the City of Clovis Council Meeting. Again, this is our second series of online council meetings. Meetings will be webcast and accessed through the links that are on the screen. We've received written comments, and we will be going through whatever written comments that we have. Please submit your separate email for each comment you're commenting on. Your item will be read into the record during the public comment portion when the item is heard. Any portion of your comment extending past three minutes may not be read aloud due to time limitations, but will be made part of the record of the proceedings. Please be aware that any public comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be read aloud during the general comment portion of the meeting. If a written comment is received after 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, efforts will be made to read the comment aloud. However, staff cannot guarantee that the written comments received after 3:00 PM will be read. Verbal comments, if you wish to speak to the council on an item by telephone, you may contact the city clerk's office no later than 3:00 PM. The instructions are below. We will call this meeting to order, and I'll ask Councilmember Juanatua to lead us in the flag, Slu.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck. Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Juanatua. Councilmember Whalen. Mayor Besseger.
Here.
Now, we will come to the public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments?
None were received.
We have no public comments. I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, reading of the titles shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution ordinance, unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution ordinance be read in full. Further reading of the resolution ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now, we come to the consent calendar portion of the meeting. These are items that are considered routine in nature and are placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. The council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motion in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Any member of the council wish to have an item on the consent calendar poll? Seeing none, any, did we receive any comments from the public requesting a consent calendar item in the poll?
No, we did not.
Okay. I will close that and come back to council for action.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously.
Sorry. On a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the motion of the consent calendar was approved unanimously, five oh.
Now, we come to the council items. Item 11, consider approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clovis confirming the Director of Emergency Services orders. Staff is Luke Surpa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of those listening online. This is Luke Surpa, City Manager. We have two items, two emergency orders that I issued this past week that I'm seeking your confirmation of. We will be having this, basically, this item on the agenda every week here on out as we continue to pass orders. The first order was Order 2020-06, and it was a waiver of late fees on business licenses and utility payments. We had discussed that at the previous workshop, and the charges will accrue, but any late fees will be waived until after this emergency is over. And then the second order that I'm asking for your confirmation on was Order 2020-07. That was an order that we developed jointly with the City of Fresno and issued simultaneously that basically waives the restrictions on RV parking to allow essential employees that may want to isolate themselves from their family to use their RV parked in front of their house or in their driveway. Those are the two orders, and I'm seeking your confirmation on both of those.
Any questions for Luke? Seeing none, any questions from the public?
No public comment.
I'm closing public comment and come back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion that we confirm the Director of Emergency Services orders.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
For item number 11, we had a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, for approval, and it was approved unanimously.
Item number 12 is a workshop where the Clovis City Council will conduct a workshop to discuss the impact of ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, the State of California, County of Fresno, and City of Clovis, and explore the actions the city may take in response to this crisis. Luke is our staff member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, this is Luke Surpa, and we'll just, we'll just jump into the bad news right away.
Nowhere does it say bad news.
So, last week during the workshop, council inquired as to what the budgetary impacts were to the city of this, and we had not really got our hands around those yet as of last week. I told you I would return in the next couple of weeks. We have been working on that, and we have a couple of estimates that we put together. So, this is, again, we're a bit in uncharted territory here. This is not a financial recession, a financially driven recession. It is a pandemic-driven recession that is having significant financial implications. So, we can only gain so much by looking back at past recessions or slowdowns. We had staff put together an estimate for this current quarter that we are in, April through June. That's the current fiscal, the last quarter of the current fiscal year, and as to what the impacts are going to be on sales tax and transient occupancy tax. And then we extrapolated that information out with some assumptions based on how long this is going to last. I'm actually going to show you two scenarios this evening. For what it's worth, this is the good one. So, the assumptions that were made here is that for this quarter, our revenue drops to what we projected it was going to, and that results in a $1.8 million reduction in, no, a $3 million reduction in current fiscal year revenues. And then we are, we are projecting that that stays flat for the next quarter, so through the summer, for July, August, and September. And then in the fourth quarter of this calendar year, the second quarter of next fiscal year, we start a gradual recovery. And I say gradual, I should say a steady recovery because it's actually a pretty steep recovery that would take us back to, getting back to our forecasted revenues by the beginning of 2022. So, it would be a more than a year-long recovery, about a five-quarter recovery to get back to where we had projected our revenues. If you look at this graph, the black solid line was our forecasted revenues. The black dotted line was our forecasted expenditures. Now, this is only for general fund. We have not gotten into this level of depth of analysis on the reserves, I mean, on the enterprise funds for a number of reasons. So, this is general fund only. The red solid line represents our estimated, guesstimated revenues with this pandemic impacts. And then the red dotted line represents our expenditures with some savings measures implemented. As you can see, we usually like to keep the dotted line lower than the solid line, and during this estimate, it doesn't stay there. The revenues drop below our expenditures, and the difference is made up through our emergency reserve. The emergency reserve, we currently have $12 to $13 million in our emergency reserve. It's at 17% of our general fund expenditures. It is there for an emergency. It would, it takes a four-fifth vote from the council to spend any of those emergency reserves. We had a goal to try to get that to 25% of our general fund expenditures. We have not been able to get there. So, if we follow this scenario, well, I'll run through it. So, this year, we would be down $3 million in revenues, and we would, we could make up $1.8 million in cost savings in the June 30th, the current. Next fiscal year, we would be down $8.5 million in revenue, and we would, we'd come up with $4.5 million in expenditure savings. And I'll go over those in a bit. And then in fiscal year '21, '22, we would have $2 million shortfall in revenue and a $1.8 million savings in expenditures. So, under this scenario, we would be utilizing almost $3 million worth of, no, I'm sorry. We would be using $4 million worth of emergency reserve next fiscal year, and then $500,000 the following fiscal year, and then a very small amount the fiscal year after that. So, at the end, when we came out of this, at the end of fiscal year '21 slash '22, our reserves would have dropped to $8 million. We would have spent 37% of our emergency reserve over the next two years. Now, to get these expenditure cuts or these expenditure savings, we are not necessarily getting rid of people that we currently have on staff, but we would be freezing the vacancies and not filling those. And again, this is general fund. The general fund, and even more so the discretionary fund, is primarily going to public safety. Those departments would have the biggest impact. Currently, our police department is funded for 109 officers. They have nine vacancies that the chief was hoping to fill. We would not be filling those for a year and a half, or actually a year and nine months. We would hold those vacant until the beginning of 2022 or the end of 2021. Fire Department, we had two additional positions in the forecast for this coming fiscal year. That was to start staffing up for Station 6. We would not fill those positions until December of 2021 or January of 2022. And then there was also one additional non-sworn PD position that we had included in our forecast. We would not be filling that position. So, those are significant personnel. They're not cut, but they're bodies that we had hoped to add that we won't be adding. And I have both chiefs here, in case you have questions for them. But to kind of put things in perspective, you know, our, our police department is funded for 109 officers, and that works out to about, a little over 0.9 officers per thousand population. Under this scenario, they would stay at 100 officers, and that is at less than 0.9. It's about 0.875 officers per thousand population, which is significantly lower than most cities tend to run. The firefighters, again, we, we are lower firefighter level than we, than we were in 2005, and the city is much larger. We were hoping to start staffing up for our next station, and I'll talk a little bit more about the next station in a couple of slides, but we would just hold off on beginning that staff-up process. Now, the drawback to that is that then when you open the station, you've got nine new bodies hitting the streets at the same time, you know, instead of kind of phasing them in, is what we had wanted to do. So, those are the personnel positions that would go unfilled. And then along with this, in addition to that, we would find another $1 million in cuts to the general fund for next fiscal year. And that would come in everything from cuts in recreation parks, senior center. Now, some of those, we're still trying to get our hands around this. Some of those would be easy cuts, easy to find because we can't open the rec center. We can't open the senior center. It leads to service reductions and savings. But others would have impacts on some of our maintenance operations. We don't have those all dialed in yet as to what those would be, but there would be additional cuts, and then another $500,000 in cuts the following fiscal year to get us through this. So, that's, that's what kind of our best guess is at this time. Now, again, we are guessing as to the duration of this event. I don't think anybody knows. If Andy, who I kind of rely on for these type of things, really knew, we couldn't afford to hire him because somebody on Wall Street would be paying him a lot more money. But this is just our best estimate. Now, I, this is what we kind of think is going to happen. But our next slide is what I'm going to call our worst-case scenario. Worse, not worst. I just want to put these kind of impacts in perspective. You know, I'm not calling it a worst because the guy that used to work for me used to say, I never saw things so bad, they couldn't get worse. So, we don't know what's going to happen with this. We truly are in uncharted territory. This scenario basically says things are going to stay flat probably until we have a vaccine. So, that would be early next calendar year, and then at that time, it would start the recovery. So, in this case, our revenues drop much lower next fiscal year. We lose, hold on, I've got these big spreadsheets with little numbers on them that are hard to read. So, we would lose $6 million next fiscal year, no, I'm sorry, $12 million next fiscal year and six the year after that. And that's if this stays in this semi-lockdown. Or I don't think we will stay in a shelter-at-home order for all that time. What I am concerned with is some of the projections are that we will flatten the curve enough that the shelter-in-place order will be lifted. And then a few months later, it starts to come roaring back, and they issue another shelter-in-place order and kind of tamp it back down and then lift it and then tamp it back. So, it would be kind of a number of small bumps in the curve, but no real recovery until we have a vaccine. Under this scenario, with the same hiring freeze in place and an additional $500,000 in cuts for the following fiscal year, not this, coming fiscal year, but for fiscal year '21, '22, above the cuts that we had had in the previous scenario, under this scenario, we would expend our entire reserve in two years by the time it recovers. So, these are some very significant impacts. Again, we don't know, we really don't know what to expect, what to anticipate, what's going to happen, how long this is going to last, what kind of adjustments the economy will make. Is there going to be just a massive shift to online shopping, and our sales tax will come back through the county pool? I don't know. I, you know, if this lasts through the Christmas season, I don't know. I don't see, we just don't know, and nobody knows. But it is significant. So, that's where we're at now, and John, if you could go to the next slide. But here's the things that, this is what Kyle I awake thinking about at night. Again, we're in uncharted territory. We don't know what to expect. The other thing that, that we see in these is every time there is an economic downturn, we make cuts, and that becomes the new normal, and we never recover. We are still in general fund on landscape maintenance. You know, we contracted that out after the last downturn, and even then, we are on what would be considered a half-maintenance scale. So, we mow the general fund parks every other week instead of every week. We never got back to mowing them every week. You know, the police department was at 116 officers in 2006 with a population of less than 80,000. We're now down to 109 with a population of almost 120,000. We're only going to let them fill 100. So, what I'm getting to is every time we ratchet it down, we make cuts, and at some point, it becomes unsustainable without some significant changes to just the types and quality and quantity of services that we deliver. I'm very concerned that because we had, some of our services never recovered from the last time, that if this is, unless this recovery is rapid and robust, we could be there at this point where we, we come out of it, and we think we've survived, but we have no money to put toward vehicles. We have no money to put toward facilities. We have no money to put toward rebuilding our emergency reserves because everything is spoken for, just to continue our current level of 100 officers and five fire stations in operation. So, so those are the things that are concerning, and again, we don't have crystal ball. We don't have all the answers. But going forward, my recommendations at this point are, I've pretty much told the chiefs, you're not getting those bodies this year. And we're going to basically implement a hiring freeze. Now, there will be, when I say a hiring freeze, it's not going to be a hard, fast freeze. Chief Fleming, Police Department, is at 100 officers right now filled. If he has a couple of retirements, I probably, hopefully, won't have to say you go to 98. We'd be able to let him fill those retirements and keep him at 100. So, when I say a freeze, I mean freeze at their current levels. Likewise, Chief Banaski has some firefighter vacancies, and he's looking at those to determine. If we fill those positions, it comes, it will reduce the amount of overtime. Is that a push? We may fill those positions if it's made up with an overtime. But the two new positions that were supposed to come, we wouldn't be filling. And the non-sworn position in PD, we would not be filling. So, I've kind of already implemented that. I'll be looking for your, your confirmation on that. It's not necessarily an emergency order, that's just an administrative issue. We are going to refine our estimates of our projected revenue as shown in the first scenario, assuming that things stay flat until the last quarter of this calendar year, and kind of build our budget with that scenario and with those expenditure cuts. We will be closely monitoring, obviously, what happens and adjusting as we go if we need a budget amendment at a later date, either to reduce something or, you know, maybe we get lucky and they find a vaccine in June and things will come rip-roaring back. Well, then, you know, if we see the revenue starting to come back, then we could very easily, you know, I could very easily tell Chief Fleming, start hiring police officers. But we will have to monitor it again because we don't, no one has a game plan for this, and no one has a past precedent for this. So, it's kind of a watch and see, but I think freezing those positions now is prudent because if we don't do it now, then we could be laying somebody off in a few months and cutting positions that we just hired. So, I think we need to play it safe, and we still could, we still could find, you know, that we're going to have to be laying people off in a few months. But for now, I think we just freeze where we're at. We got a couple of big capital projects that are on the horizon. My recommendation is to complete the design and bidding for the Landmark Square project and put it out to bid and see what the bids come back at. We could have, this could be a great time. I mean, if there's, if there's one good thing about this, that could be a great, if, if things are really bad, this could be a great time to bid that project. And the annual impact of the debt service on that project, it's not going to make or break the city because it's, again, as I've told council before, right now, senior services gets less than 1% of our general fund budget. With Landmark Square, with the high bid prices that we were assuming we would get, it's going to still be less than 2%. So, even if we cut that project, it's not going to free up a lot of money, and we may never have an opportunity to build this again, especially if we have a good bidding environment. And then Fire Station 6, I think we need to complete the design bidding and construction of that. We are already, that is partially or significantly funded by development impact fees, if not completely funded by development impact fees. There would have to be some debt service, but even the debt service would be paid through the development impact fees. So, that money couldn't necessarily go anywhere else, and we are in desperate need of Fire Station 6. We are already seeing response times below our, our standards in that part of town. So, I want to continue with those projects and get them out to bid, hopefully be able to award both of them, but definitely award Fire Station 6, and then move forward with the budget built kind of on that first scenario I showed you. So, that's my recommendation and feedback on the budget. Open to any questions or comments or...
Any questions for Luke?
I was trying to look online. I think I asked this last time too, and I know that you're all watching this, but what is in this CARES Act, this federal act for COVID-19, really, for local government? So, there might be some restoration of budget through that. I don't know what, I'm just trying to see what it is right this minute.
I'll have Andy come up. I, for the most part, I think much of the local government money that's been identified so far is to reimburse for actual COVID expenditures. I don't necessarily think it's going to be to make local government whole because everybody's budget, you know, one of the things the state's looking at right now, in fact, I think they adopted it on Friday, was a delay in the collection of sales tax for the current quarter. So, businesses under a certain size will be able to just keep their sales tax to kind of, you know, and not, not remit it to the state. Now, the state will still be tracking all of that and telling us how much we would have gotten, but that means we won't be getting that sales tax either. So, we can book it as revenue, but we'll have to work with finance to see how we do that as a cash flow because we actually won't be getting the cash for another year after this. But I'll turn it over to Andy, and he can tell you a little bit about the CARES.
So, the CARES Act, $2 trillion total. There was funding set aside for, that was allocated to states and large cities to pay for COVID-related expenses. So, that'll be going to the State of California and cities for that use. We may see some of that from the state, but we're not expecting a whole lot from that source. There was also an investment in the Community Development Block Grant Program. We were made aware that we were getting an allocation of $430,000 from that source. It's pretty limited in what you can use it for, and it's not for ongoing operations in general. There also is a financing mechanism that they are pumping money into the municipal bond market to reduce borrowing costs because those spiked significantly during the downward spiral that was going on on Wall Street. That could reduce borrowing costs for cities or get them back to a point where they're sustainable. I think they went from 2% to 3% all the way up to 8% or 9% overnight. So, they put that into the bill to shore that up. That's all I'm aware of from that act that would directly impact the City of Clovis's finances.
I believe that we need to make sure that our elected representatives can help us if they have a fourth or fifth CARES Act version. Yes, my other question is, what is the, what are the assumptions about business recovery? So, I saw something today that was one out of four will, oh, gosh, I'm not good at numbers. 25% won't come back at all. So, I mean, in our forecast, there, all of our businesses are not going to come back. It's just, it's not possible. So, do we have any forecasts that you used when you made this assessment? We have no idea.
So, what we can do is look at history. We looked at national GDP changes over time, compared those to city revenues. Like Luke said, this is unprecedented. We have not seen something like this before. During the 2008 recession, over a three-year time period, we saw our sales tax revenues drop by about 20%. We're expecting that drop in the forecast that Luke provided, for that drop to happen all at once and be sustained over, hopefully... at once and be sustained over hopefully a shorter period of time, but nonetheless, all at once. And that's what's unique about this. It could be deeper, it could be shallower. We're also stepping it up slowly over that time as things gather back. So that really acknowledges some of those businesses not making it and/or some businesses just not having as high a revenue. Hotels, we also dropped to a very low level during the closure period and brought them back up not to as high of a level as they were at, say, in mid-March relative to what we've been experiencing, like Luke said, I guess.
The irony is we build all these hotels for the CAF track meet and the rodeo and the swimming championships and all of which those could like maybe not ever return or return in some smaller scale. I mean, I just think that is, that's difficult. I would just say from the hospitals' perspective, I think your fall forecast for returning is what planning assumptions hospitals are using. So it might, might, you know, something might break in the summertime, but hospitals are fully prepared for a second surge in the fall for whatever that's worth. So it could mean more shelter in place or, you know, I don't know. But, and maybe the fire chief has different information, but hospitals are using that as our planning assumption for cyclical nature, at least for a period of time. Well, as a good news conversation here.
Ours was a baseline with a very small amount of gain through the fall, hopefully some hope by Christmas. And then also just accounting for kind of the community psyche and wanting to spend money and those kinds of things.
Councilmember Flores?
We keep saying this is unprecedented, it's never happened before, but it really has happened before. We had the Spanish flu, we have had SARS, China's gone through this, Italy will have gone through this before we do, Spain and France. And so there'll be models to look at before we have to. And so there's, there's reasons to be optimistic. We can learn from, from what people are doing, even with COVID-19. What strategies will they use to get out of this? We know that epidemics, first cycle is horrible and we, and then we're going through it. And, you know, you hear all the pessimism from Washington that this is going to be our Pearl Harbor, but it's not happening in California, it's happening back east. And that, that's a very true statement if you leave, if you live back east. We'll get it two weeks later here in the West Coast. So we got to know what they're talking about, where they're talking about and what strategy. So even New York will experience things two weeks prior to us. And so they'll come out of it two weeks prior to us. That gives us at least a two-week window where we can, we can start seeing what's one going to happen to us and what we can do two weeks ahead. So we are getting a window to the future by other countries and then other states. So we got to see what the strategies are for the next cycle because it will come back. You know, epidemics show us, especially flu epidemics and SARS shows us that it will slow down for the summer and it will be back next flu season. And we still don't have vaccines, but we, we have learned some things about this thing, what we can do and other things, you know. It wasn't until this week that people started wearing masks, when we, we should have been wearing masks from the get-go. So what, what does that buy us? And what can we do that to, for, for business recovery and business continuity? You know, should we have been doing all the things we've done and closed everything when there were other strategies available, had we been wearing masks and better masks? Now we have a five-minute test. We didn't have that three months ago. We do now. Who has five-minute tests? Should, should local governments like a city be investing in those five-minute tests and seeing who has the virus, who has had the virus? Those who, who have had the virus no longer need to be quarantined, they have some immunity, maybe one year, maybe two, but those are people you can put back to work in the city and, and through, you know, throughout the system. So, you know, it's not that pessimistic. We just have to rely on the science, know what, know what happens when we get infected and use it to our advantage. So should we invest as a city or maybe a system or maybe the region at, in those five-minute tests? Now we can test our workforce or maybe share cost with the school district, share cost with another entity for that, for that test. Put it in and you wait five minutes and we know if our workforce, the school district's workforce, now we know we have other people beyond essential workers or even essential workers because to have a cop out for, for two weeks, it's a major blow. To have a firefighter out for two weeks, it's a major blow. So let's not just say, whoa, you know, we're going to have to do this again. No, we may not have to if we start testing ourselves. Those machines are out, those five-minute test machines are out. Let's go buy one, you know? That's an investment on our workforce. So we can do things and be ahead of the curve if, if we pay attention to what others are doing. I mean, South Korea and Japan showed us that mask from the get-go made sense and we started last week. That's, that's bizarre.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Luke and Andy, thank you for this report. Certainly, while we're not excited about what is that you've shared with us, as much information as you can provide to us allows us to make a well-informed decision and so for that, we're thankful. And also for Councilmember Flores' comments related to how, you know, we do have people that are going to be going through this or have gone through this ahead of us. I always feel like I have to give an analogy every time I'm at a council meeting. So a nice analogy related to what Jose said is that for those of us who've had Big Brothers, we saw what they did and some of them made the right call, some of them didn't. And when we would follow in the footsteps of those decisions that were done well by our Big Brothers, then we had the opportunity to benefit from that. Unlike that scenario or that analogy with the Big Brothers is that with my Big Brothers, I had in one case, a five-year head start and then another, you know, a year and a half head start. Here, it seems like a lot of these other countries or states, you know, maybe it's two weeks, maybe it's two months. And we're not necessarily going to know if what they did was the right move at the time because the secondary effects of that decision may not yet be fully realized in the, the two months that it would take or two weeks that would take for us to kind of make our call, if you will. But I, I did want to mention a couple of things. Just initially, I want to follow up on something that I had commented to Andy on last week and then Andy, I want to kind of turn the floor over to you just to refresh your memory as well as others. You know, when we had, knew that COVID-19 was coming to our shores, there were a variety of protocols that were put in place, not just with the city of Clovis, but even I remember looking at, you know, the California Department of Public Health came out with kind of their protocols for when somebody on a higher education campus comes down with COVID-19. And if you had somebody who was positive at Fresno State or any higher education campus, the idea was to, you know, just be much more careful in your social distancing and in your hygiene. And then if you had five students who had it, then that might make sense at that point to go to kind of the distance learning. And all of those, it feels, it feels to me as though all the plans, no matter what those plans were, ended up kind of going in the trash can prematurely, in my view, but they regardless went into the trash can. So, but there was a lot of thought that went into how it is that we would adjust to what was coming to us because we knew it was coming to us. What were the triggers that were going to cause us to take certain actions? I want us to be as thoughtful and careful in our approach to how it is that we choose to reopen the city of Clovis, whether, you know, if we see a flattening in Fresno County. If at some point they give a city of Clovis numbers, you know, are we going to be looking at those and what that would mean for how soon we would be opening shops? Would we be opening offices first where people could show that they were engaged in social distancing? At what point would it make sense for us to actually go as far as opening restaurants as long as tables were, you know, six feet apart from each other and what that would look like? And so because we all know you, Andy, our, our thought is that you probably have thought about these things and what, you know, maybe some of your thoughts were just initially on what our plan of approach would be for when we can start to ramp up again in the city of Clovis.
So for the listening audience, this is Andy Houseler, the Community and Economic Development Director. Yeah, I thought a lot about a lot of things the last few weeks. Feels like it's been a couple of years. Yeah. So in regards to how we would open up our community again, what we've, I have learned going through the process of closing our community is being in tune with what the California Department of Public Health is doing and the Fresno County Department of Public Health is doing is critical. I would highly like to work with them much more closely in front of any actions coming so that we can get communication ready for our businesses and residents on how to prepare for that. So in the case of reopening our, our community, what I would like is for the state and the county to provide us guidance on what that would look like, what kind of businesses are impacted, how they could operate, how they couldn't. And then we can take that and craft that into a form that could be communicated to our businesses so they can best manage based on those guidelines that could be unique based on the different sectors as you described. We've had a pretty amazing, successful run the last few weeks of communicating with our businesses. For instance, we have our ClovisForBusiness.com website. That website was created to market to people outside of our area and we generally don't have a whole lot of traffic on it, although it's been very lucrative for us. We typically have 300 visits per month. This morning, Chad McCollum told me he saw that we were up to 5,000 visits in the last few weeks.
Andy, can I interrupt you for, I'm sorry for doing that. When you say ClovisForBusiness.com, can you just, so people who may be listening out there, if it's the number four...
Yeah, it's Clovis, the number four, Business.com. And on there is a business resource page for COVID-related issues amongst any other things. If you want to come to Clovis, we're happy to help you as well. But on that page, we've been able to bring everything together in one spot, provide clear communication and we've emailed directly to every business in our community what is going on on a regular basis. It's over 2,500 emails going out every few days that we're communicating. So I think critical going forward is clear communication, clear communication on what exactly is expected of businesses that are operating under the closure. That's been our, where we're at right now is clear communication on that. The next step would be clear communication on who could reopen and what guidelines I need to follow when they are open and then clear communication when it's open fully. And the last part of that would be showing leaders in our community on how they're engaging appropriately with businesses in the community when we are reopened. And I have some creative ideas on that and I'm sure Chad McCollum will take those to the next level. But it, that's going to take some community leadership at a level that's going to need to be very visible and people will start getting comfortable with being in public spaces again, such as restaurants, et cetera, in a way that protects themselves, that follows the Department of Public Health guidelines.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I look forward to, you know, hearing what steps are going to be taken at the appropriate time. And I, you know, I, I'm glad that you threw in the County Department of Public Health as well because I, I know that the California Department of Public Health has, you know, much broader jurisdiction than the county and the county can be a little bit more specific and not necessarily are responses at the state level the same as they should be at the county level. One, maybe they should be more draconian or less draconian. It depends on where that jurisdiction is at that particular given moment. I did want to also affirm what I think to be true is that the, the city of Fresno came out with a program related to $750,000 to be given or loaned to some small businesses. And our approach has really been to, as I understand it, just to kind of concierge people through the SBA loan process or the, which would include some of the banks as well. And if that is true, can you tell us what your, some of the questions or frustrations some of the businesses have had and what, if anything, we can do in order to make sure that the businesses know how to take advantage of some of those loans? Because, and I'll, I'll just say, I spoke to Assembly Member Patterson today and he had mentioned that he had gotten a few calls from businesses in the city of Clovis and I needed to make sure that I could redirect those people or tell the Assembly Member to redirect those people to ClovisForBusiness.com and perhaps maybe that would assist them. So that's kind of a multifaceted question, but I want to give you the floor for that.
So we looked pretty hard originally at any kind of aid fund that we could provide to small business in the city of Clovis, but my economics background told me that there was no amount of capital that I could put together in the world that would be sufficient for the need. So the city of Fresno's program of $750,000, in my opinion, wouldn't go far enough for the level of need that businesses have to keep employees on payroll and keep them in operation during this time. So we started looking heavily at what the state and the federal government was doing as far as stimulus. And we knew that connecting businesses to those resources would be much more fruitful for the businesses. For instance, in the CARES Act, the SBA program that funnels money to local banks to provide forgivable loans for payroll, rent, et cetera, if Clovis got its, for a capital share, it would be about $135 million. That's a much, you know, almost triple our general fund. So that is a resource that must be tapped. We have found a guide that was put together by the Federal Senate that details out every federal program that has meaningful financial resources available. Excellent guide. Thankfully, we didn't have to create it and we have placed that on ClovisForBusiness.com. It includes links on each program that you're able to utilize as a business, the eligibility requirements. And then in addition to that, we have an existing contract with the Central Valley Business Development Center, which is health at the Clovis Community College. We've been in contact with them and they have repositioned all of our monies that we invest with them to provide coaching, one-on-one coaching to businesses on how to access these funds. We're monitoring that closely to make sure there's available resources there. It may come back to council thinking, saying that we should allocate additional resources to this to ensure Clovis businesses have the advice they need to walk through this process. And we're also available as a staff. My, someone can email me through the website. We provide direct response, phone calls and talk through issues with businesses as well to guide them.
The, one of the concerns that I've, I've heard popping up and, forgive my cynicism because I am a politician, but sometimes we paint in very broad strokes as to, here's this amount of money to solve this problem. We throw money at problems without really getting into the details of how that's really going to work. And so when it comes to the loans that can be forgivable for some of the small businesses in the city of Clovis, it has been a bit of a frustration, as I understand it, in, for the banks frankly, as well as for the small businesses because it's not as though the federal government is the one that's loaning out the money, it's the banks that's loaning out the money. And if the banks get it wrong, then the banks, of course, will be blamed. And if the banks don't do enough, then of course the banks will be blamed. And so, you know, frankly, I think that banks are hesitant and probably for good reason as a result of what they saw in the last, you know, recession, how they were kind of pummeled by politicians that, you know, asked them to do these things. And so have you had any pushback from the banks that you're aware of that say, hey, you know, this is just not a workable program because it hasn't been well thought through?
Yes, on Saturday, I was notified by a small business owner that I was working with that their bank was not going to be participating in the program. That was very concerning to me. I was able to get documentation from what the bank had provided them and had immediately engaged on that issue. Word on the street this morning is that that bank had changed position on it and will be participating in the program. So we're monitoring it very closely and working on communicating those issues with the federal government at various levels. I had a conversation on Friday with Department of Economic Development at the federal level, our local rep, about those issues and will continue to do so.
Good, thank you for that. And I, and I, when we're responding as quickly as we are, sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. So the degree that we can kind of be a clearinghouse of information like this, sounds like this ClovisForBusiness.com is for our small businesses. And I think that that, you know, that will be helpful. It may be that, you know, as things pop up, you do have to continue to engage the way that you engaged on Saturday. So appreciate your efforts.
There are other resources on there. The city of California put together a $50 million loan fund. There's a link to that on that website as well, as well as information on like utility late fees being waived, those kinds of things, as well as guidance on current closures.
And if somebody goes to that website, they don't understand it and they still have questions...
Please call.
All right. And they've got your email address on there or-
My, my picture, email, phone is all over the place.
Wow.
I'm getting a lot of phone calls.
All right. Thank you, Andy.
Councilmember Flores.
Andy, Andy, when you responded to Councilmember Waylon, you said that you'll go by the State Department of Public Health and the Fresno Department of Public Health. I'm, I'm just going to caution you because sometimes they're, they're not on the same page. And sometimes they're giving information that's pretty late. The Fresno County Department of Public Health didn't start recommending that until April third. Back in March twenty-seven, they ordered businesses and government agencies to test their employees before they got to work and make sure that they weren't, uh, they weren't symptomatic of, uh, of COVID nineteen. Back in March seventeen, there were studies out there in, in, in open sources that were saying people, a lot of people who had the virus were pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic and, and presented themselves without fever, without any of the symptoms and could, and no one would recognize them. So what they were telling people to do, the business owners, they're, it's still under, I think it's a misdemeanor if you don't comply with their order to the state. That's Fresno County. They're saying they're ordering business to this on a daily basis, not knowing that even thermometers, you can't buy them. Out of stock everywhere you go, you gotta, you gotta, um, to, to Target, you go anywhere, you can't buy a thermometer. So how can these businesses comply with the order that Fresno County has issued? And now Washington is telling us, no, these people may be pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic and will not present with what you're ordering these, these people, these businesses to do. So it makes no difference. Someone can present themselves every day to work looking perfectly fine. And they're still carrying the virus and spreading it. So you see, even our, our local public health officials had it wrong. So don't rely, we all have to be doing a lot of research on this thing because it's out there. We got to rely on, like I said, people who've gone through this two weeks before us, two months before us. Because they have the information. It's, it's hard to find. But, and we have to make sure that we go to reliable sources, CDC and other sources. Unfortunately, it started in China and who knows if they're telling the truth. Most people don't trust that source for sure. Just, just a word of caution that if, if we rely on what the county, you know who I would, I would, I would rely on? I'd rely on those business owners who want to, who want to come back to work, you know? You have to rely, they have an industry, they have associations, they have doctors, they pay them well. See what the industry wants to do. And, and, but then, then you, you know, trust but verify. Okay, so, so you say it works, show me. So if we don't trust county health, don't trust them either. Trust but verify. Because a lot of people are going to be asking you to do all kinds of things. Trust but verify.
Councilmember Warren to it.
I've got some questions with regards to the presentation loop. So for this year, you're not projecting any use of the reserve fund. It's starting next year that it'll be the four million and then five hundred thousand after that? In that, not the worst case, but the, the first case scenario?
Correct. We, we were able to squeeze enough savings. We, we, we knew we were going to, we had projected coming into the end of this fiscal year with some significant savings that we were going to use to buy cars and to do other things like that. Now we'll be using it to make up for lost revenue. So this year we'll be okay because the revenue impact is really only for the last quarter of this year. It's going into next fiscal year when we'll have to tap the reserves.
Okay. And so anything comes before us, it'll be then? It'll be later on when you come for that fourth is vote or the discussion on a potential use-
It will probably be at the budget point. Uh, when, when we ring the budget, if I build it showing that we're going to need to use some emergency reserves in the coming fiscal year, then that'll be the time when we need the fourth fifth vote, vote.
Okay.
And so when we introduce the budget, we're introducing the budget first meeting in May?
It'll be May eighteenth. It's normally the third of May.
Okay, so May eighteenth we'll be introducing the budget. And at that time we can, we'll know better what we're proposing to do as far as the emergency reserve. If we are proposing to tap it, um, we can have that conversation and we need to have that conversation there. Because what I don't want to do is come June twenty-third and find out, no, build a new budget without the emergency reserve. Because that only gives us, you know, a short time. So if we, if we know when we introduce the budget or, you know, we'll know then and we'll have that discussion that night.
And, and when that comes, can you also present options on how we can generate revenue? Even though it may be tough options or is that not the time as well? Because, you know, when, when does it come where, do we always go to reserve first without talking to options? Do we talk both at the same time? Do we, and so I, I would like some-
I, I could present some options. I will tell you that, um, uh, you know, timing is everything. And right now is probably a terrible time to be seeking additional revenues, but I can, we can discuss that.
And I would, you know, the direction from-
Yeah.
-the rest of the council members as well. I mean, I, I don't know when is a good time to present those or if, you know, so we can direct staff? Or do we just go, this is the sort of time for the reserve use? So we don't even discuss the, the other revenue options that staff can or should be researching to present to us at that time? So you guys can also help. One other question with regards to the projections, does it all, does it look at also the building permits and the projections for that? But will it still stay around that seven hundred and fifty number or?
So, so we're monitoring that closely. That is not included in this forecast because that really affects an enterprise fund. The Planning and Development Services is on enterprise fund, but we're close to monitoring enterprise funds as well. Right now, we are still having significant business, uh, building permit activity. I think Dwight reported this morning that we had thirty applications for permits this month. So, uh, and it's, it's the sixth. So that is going good. We, we do somewhat expect a rush of building permits before code changes and before some things take effect. But for this fiscal year, I think we'll, we'll still do well above our, our average. Next year. Yeah, everybody's, everyone's going to shoot me here. The, uh, uh, so, so anyway, um, for, for ne- for next year, he doesn't backwash, that's all right. For, for next year, we are looking, um, hard at, and we're trying to ask the building community and the development community what they're anticipating. Again, they, they don't know. They, they, they really don't know what's going to happen. So it would not surprise me if we have a slowdown next fiscal year, but we won't know that for a while. But we are looking at that. And, and the, I'm, I'm mostly concentrating on the general fund tonight and, uh, and not so much on the enterprise funds, largely because the enterprise funds have significantly higher percentage of reserves than the general fund. So, uh, you know, we, we've always known that things weren't going to stay this busy in the building department. And we have a pretty significant reserve that could carry us through a pretty significant slowdown, but we are monitoring that.
Wanted to, um, piggyback on what Councilman Flores said with regards to, I know the authority we gave was for, um, I guess you're the Director of Emergency Services, to follow the guidelines of the county and the state. But I, I like to echo what Councilmember Flores said. I think some, I think it is healthy to get experts who don't belong to those entities. Because I think sometimes those entities are influenced by us, politicians. Meaning the politician can go to the Director of Public Health and go, don't say that, meaning the politician. And they won't say it because they work for those politicians. And so sometimes I think it's healthy to get people in the industry, for example, the hospitals, whether it's children's communities, St. Agnes. Just go, okay, what are they seeing? What about other experts? So that way we can get all the information at times for us to help make those decisions. But not that, we, I don't think we have done anything that I am opposed to. I'm just saying that there are times that we need those and that, um, I don't know how that happens. But I think that will also be helpful to us where we, like that day we brought, when, when Matt Jostlin was here, I thought that it confirmed some of our fears and also validated a lot of the decisions that we've made. I think that will be healthy and helpful.
And, and, and we do try to watch that, you know, the one thing is that just the way the laws are set up, we can always do something above and beyond the state and county orders. We cannot buck them and go against, we can't open up a business when the state's ordered it closed. That's, it's a statewide order, same thing with the county. So, uh, but we, we could close one that the state thinks, you know, could still be open, we could close. But we couldn't, we can't really go back and, and buck the system on an order that they've issued a statewide order or a countywide order. But we, we do look at, 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 at the information out there. We're actually in the process of buying masks, of the, just the cloth masks for all of our employees. And, and we don't have the, enough yet to give to everybody. But we're actually buying them from a local manufacturer and I think we have how many hundreds so far, Andy?
About four hundred.
So we have about four hundred. So this week we will have enough and you know, just kind of like the orders where, you know, you must take their temperature, but oh, you can't find a thermometer anywhere. We don't want to order our employees to start wearing masks when we don't have masks for them. So we've ordered masks and we're getting them in and we'll probably be heading in that direction. The state may be going in that direction as well, but we will, once we have the, the inventory necessary.
And, um, one last thought I had with regards to sort of COVID nineteen. And maybe Sean, I can get some insight. You know, we, we, our senior center is one of the most robust. We have the most visitors. And some seniors live alone and they, they rely on our services to, for fellowship, for, for activities, for, for exercise. Are we doing anything to sort of monitor them? Because some of them don't have children who can monitor them. Are we engaging with other nonprofits who can help in that arena at all? And so can you speak to that just because they rely so much on us for those services?
Sure. Shawna Holtermann, General Services Director. The staff at the senior center is currently calling all twenty-five hundred people that we have in our database. She does about seventy, seventy-five a day and kind of just checks in with them, sees what they need. Any, anything that we're seeing as a trend that where we can provide information, it's going on the Clovis CARES site. For instance, today I asked them to check on the required minimum distribution. That supposedly the IRS has relaxed that for 2020. Asked them to make sure that that was correct information and then put that on there. You know, little things that we think will benefit seniors. In addition, we did call a hundred and ninety-nine seniors that usually come in for lunch. And eighty-three of those, I believe, wanted the home-delivered meals, which did start. They get a delivery once a week and that's through the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. And they get a delivery of a week's worth of frozen meals and some fresh fruit and dairy. We also started a whole bunch of things on Facebook to kind of do little brain teasers and things to connect with them, you know, activities and things that they can do. Some of the other things staff are considering is having some of the exercise teachers come in and do like a Facebook Live to let them know, hey, we're still thinking of you and, you know, check in with us.
No, thank you. Thank you. I think it, please commend the staff for the work they're doing. I mean, for them to make the calls even, uh, to, to get checked on. This is the human side of government that people don't hear about. So excellent.
I know Amy's listening right now.
Yeah, okay. And just to the, the, maybe the staff who are every day, but especially to fire and to police. Is your staff being overworked? Is there any burnout? Because they're the ones who can't stay home, you know, we, we need them out there for every call. You know, how, how are, you know, are men and women in the front lines, are, you know, are they doing well? Do, do they need anything from us that we can help with? You know, I think we remember the hospitals a lot. So, you know, probably over at Children's, but at community where I work, people pour out bringing meals to, you know, hospital staff. But we don't see it too much in your industries. And if that is needed or we need some help, let us know.
Job and asking the fire chief, I'll speak on behalf of fires is, is, you know, these are times that are difficult is when public safety shines and we have a job to do and this is the time we step up and go do that job. Every one of my department we've checked on, we've got the proper PPE. We were out ahead of it, really actually out ahead of it, watching what Councilmember Flores was stating there of knowing that it was going to come here. And we ordered or had stuff early, ordered more in January twenty-second, still waiting for some of that to be delivered maybe. But I'm not holding my breath for that. But the staff is doing good. We do see people though that are sick presenting with symptoms. The good part about that is, is we've now finally gotten an alignment from an order from the state to not have to have our people off for the two-week period of self-isolation. So now it's seventy-two hours post a fever or seven days since the beginning of their symptoms. We do have the thermometers that we've gotten in place and we're doing those types of things. But overall, it's really good. I mean, probably the saddest part is, is we started a program with the bargaining unit, the CFA, on trying to get out there and support our local businesses to buy meals. I don't know if you've seen that posted on their Facebook over the last couple of weeks, but we've tried to do that. Probably the hardest part that we're come to is, is that we do know that the asymptomatic people are out there and things along those lines is, is that we've kind of, um, the fire stations are kind of a public place and we've kind of turned them into a little bit more of Fort Knox of not allowing people to come, not relieving their family members and things along those. Because what we've seen in the fire service is because there is more than one people together is, is that what's happened to us is, is that it's spreading more from internally from people giving it to other employees in the firehouse. So that's why we're trying to limit the amount of people that come in there and things along those lines. So in turn, that if we do, uh, get it, we minimize the effect to other employees. But everyone's morale's up good. We're doing a good job. We're servicing the community. We have seen a reduction actually, so, um, in call volume over the last couple of weeks. So call volume is actually down for all the people who normally use our services that maybe aren't really what we consider over the years to be emergency. And they use for whatever reason, they have stopped and decided that they don't want to be taken to the hospital at this point. So really what we're seeing is truly the much more emergent people that the system was designed for. But, um, so that's lower call volume. We like to be able to do a few other things during that long period. But again, we've stopped multi-company drills from bringing the crews together in order to stop infection. And really what we're seeing is on the good side is, is we are flattening the curve. I mean, if you look at it, we were expected to peak somewhere before the thirteenth or fifteenth of April. Now the date comes to the end of April, middle of May. So I don't know if that's good or bad, how you look at it. But we are in contact Monday, Wednesday, Friday with the Office of Emergency Services. I'm on a conference call with them and we are getting the best and most up-to-date information and passing that along.
Good evening. Kurt Fleming, Police Chief, Chief of Police. How you guys doing? I'm all messed up.
I like it.
You guys got a top, tough job, I'm telling you, going forward. We're, morale's good at the police department. Call volume's down, like Chief said over here, we're down five hundred calls on average a week. Officers are, actually been commenting that they're kind of bored right now just because we're kind of holding the reins back. We, we want to keep our officers healthy. So we're trying to restrict a lot of things that they're doing right now and just keeping them limited contact with the public. Obviously we want to call, go to the calls that we need to go to, but the calls that we don't, we're trying to handle those over the phone or, or not handle them if we don't have to. So, um, other than that, morale's good. Not looking forward to the next couple of years of, uh, the forecast and the budget if it holds true. But we'll get through it like we always do and figure a way to, to manage our resources.
Question for Kurt.
I think- I, 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 Von, you know, just, I think, uh, a message from the both of you, what Chad's been doing would be very beneficial to the community because I think you're at the front lines. We can stay home, but you can't, you know? Your men and women have to be there. And I think messages from the two of you, maybe you've already been doing it. I don't follow as well. I've seen, you know, a lot of your guys, um, visiting local restaurants and posting that, showing the support for the community, but I think that stuff like that, it really lifts the morale of the people. Especially they follow the police, um, social media, you know, sites so much and so. Thank you very much for that. That's Member Ashbeck.
Just a question, Chief. Um, you said, uh, following up by phone. Is telepolicing such a thing? Like where you do like a FaceTime with a citizen who has a concern or a complaint?
There are some departments doing that right now that they're kind of, you set an appointment during certain times of the day and they'll actually do a kind of a FaceTime or Skype where you take a police report that way. Um, we, we've really focused on telephonic, uh, calls. We haven't gone to that. Uh, we're exploring, um, online policing right now as far as online reporting. Um, there is some products out there that a lot of, um, companies are offering right now for free. Obviously they're trying to get you enticed by it, but, uh, we're exploring that right now. We're also exploring, uh, uh, our UAV, uh, program, our drone program to expand that. There is some opportunities right now with the FAA to kind of relax, to allow us to use that air resource versus sending our officers into something that we might not need to do. So we're exploring those options as well right now.
Telemedicine is obviously taken off, so maybe telepolicing, Clovis would do it better than anyone else. So it might, people seem comforted to see a human face even though it's on the telephone. I know there, you can't take your child to the doctor, at least you can see him on FaceTime. So I'm betting the lesson applies to police officers too.
I, Luke, I, we've paid for these fire engines already, right, that we've ordered? Did we have to pay upfront to get, to order those?
We did. We purchased one out of DIF and the other one in an order lock-in. The price before the February first, we purchased and they have the funds.
And what fiscal year would we need to get the personnel hired, assuming we bid it, build it, staff it? What year would we be looking at to do that?
The goal, if we stay on the current track with the bidding, design bid, construction, would be a January first of 2022 opening.
Okay.
But at a bare minimum is, is we have to get some unit out there for distribution. Is, is we have more stations along the west side of Clovis than the east side, but we have cooperating partners with Fresno County and, um, Fresno City on the west side and there really is no cooperating partner out in the southeast. Fresno's got a big hole out there. We have a big hole out there. It is just kind of a big hole, for lack of a better term. And then if I can add one more thing too, is, is today at the, the county is the first day that they actually published data that actually shows a little bit more in-depth to the 124 COVID-positive patients and where they are and 102 are in the Fresno-Clovis metro area. So predominantly where the population is the most is where the current heat map shows of where we are.
Chief Fleming, we're kind of in uncharted territory here. I, I, teaching at the police academy, there's going to be a class that's going to be graduating here fairly soon and we're going to be re-initiating the academy, I think in three weeks. This class probably, I think, getting out in August, I think. I know with using people as reserves, the, and where I'm going with this is kind of thinking outside the box. A lot of these young men and women aren't going to have jobs because most of the police departments are going to be exactly in the same spot that we're in. But if we could bring a handful on as reserves, we're going to background them, train them, get them through the FTO program so that hopefully when we come out of this, these would be people that we can hire immediately. We've already, we're ahead of the curve. I, I guess there's some, something that, we've never been there in this severity in this short a time, so we might have to think differently about that. I, I'm, I'm sure that there are young men and women who faced with not having a job and faced with, well, at the very least I can get my background done, get my full training program done. Even if Club doesn't hire me, maybe somebody else will and we would share, share them. I mean, it might be something we consider. And just from a, a business reinitiation standpoint, looking in, and it's, I don't know that we can compare the Spanish flu with what we're going through now because, you know, the information might be different, symptomat, symptoms might be different, but Spanish flu had three separate comebacks. Uh, the first one wasn't as bad. The second one was much more severe and the third one was lesser. So I, I think we, when we work with our business community, we probably need to have some type of guidance with them when we're doing the plan to get them to re-initiate, when you're going to reopen. They should, we should probably have some benchmarks that they need to be looking for, for pulling back. I'd hate to see somebody go all in with some federal government money that they got and end up on their face and then they're ruined for the, you know, for the next decade financially. Um, so it would be nice to be able to come up with a, at least something that we can give our business community and we'll have to gear it towards different kinds of places. But, you know, something at the very least, they'd have a plan. Uh, Jose and I had a, had a mentor named, uh, Dave and Dave would say, "If you don't have time to plan, plan anyway." And I think that's kind of where we need to be. We need to be planning for the worst-case scenario, but also planning for when it comes out, we can jump on it. Any other member of the council have anything on this?
I just, I think going back to Von's comment about, or what are the options? Where'd Luke go? Right there, six feet away. No, it's good. No, you're good. I was trying to find the six feet. Where'd he go? Where'd he go? Um, I do think we need to look at revenue options and I guess I for one probably don't want to get to a place where we spend literally all of our reserves. That's probably not smart. So, you know, I think there's going to have to be some scenario planning about what that looks like. So I assume spending all of our reserves suggests leaving all of our existing workforce intact. Hiring freezes, but not letting anyone go and no one wants to have the opposite of that happen. But I don't think, I mean, I for one don't think getting down to zero reserves is, we built that reserves up, reserve for, partly for this. So, I mean, I think we're going to use some of them and that's what they're there for, but I think, so we need to, I think, look at revenue options as well as sort of how are we going to get there in the worst, with a T, worst-case scenario, because it probably does exist. I guess the thing I want to say, just because I do this all day long and all night long, I, I want to be really careful that the Fresno County Department of Public Health and CDC both said the same thing about masks on the same day. I think what I've, what I feel is that we, as elected officials, we got to let public health will be in their lanes. We will never know what they know. We will never have insight into their modeling and the data and what California's using. So I just want to be careful and I think it's, I am totally biased because it is what I do seven days a week right now. But hospitals, so I think Von's point, maybe we can get some hospitals in to help. It's just what their forecasts are, but I just, I want to be really careful that we don't, um, we don't know what they know. So I just think the mask thing, Dave, was the same day that CDC said you should wear a mask. So they weren't late unless CDC was late. So I just think we should be careful and not make judgments about health things that we just don't know what they know. And so when you, Bob, you talked about maybe Clovis could bring back something ahead of someone else. I for one would never support that. I don't think we know enough to say. The state says that bars should be closed, but we say, we've got a few bars and they can put six feet apart. I am not ever going to be comfortable going there. I just don't think that's our space. So I just want to say that with love and respect, but I'm good if we're in the lane we know and we rely on experts to inform us as opposed to trying to second-guess or have our own opinion about this or that. Those five-minute tests are not publicly available, won't be for four months. They're not on the market in any, in any number. A city would never get one in front of a hospital. So I just think there's things that we just don't know in the larger, I don't think it's helpful when we try to make up stuff we don't understand. That's all. I think, because I do it all the time, I'm just sort of like I'm up to here with COVID-19, but I want to be careful that we stay in the lane that we know. That's all.
Any other questions for staff from council? We will open this up to the public. Mr. Clark, do we have any members of the public?
There was no public comment for item number 12.
I will close. Public comment? Uh, this is just, we're just having a discussion workshop. Do you need any direction from us?
Uh, not on, I, I think I've, I've got the direction on the budget. The budget was just the first part of the workshop. We still do. We got lots of it.
Oh, there's more fun? There's more fun?
Actually, actually, the, the rest should be, um, much, much faster. I just wanted to give council a briefing on a few things, um, that are going on. Uh, actually, some of it's already been talked about, um, the increase in our webpage traffic that we're seeing because of these resources we're putting up for businesses and, you know, for the public to try to help the businesses. The, the restaurant page, here's, you know, the specials on takeouts. Um, Andy and Sean, uh, have also, are putting together a program where we will be working with a third-party vendor and people can basically buy gift cards at restaurants and all businesses in Clovis. It's all online. Um, and the idea is to try to get some revenue going into them now, um, that may be used later to help tide them over this tough time. Um, and, and Andy and Sean have put together a, a good program on that where we will be actually paying for the processing fees of the city. It's, it's a nominal cost, but it's just a way to get out there and then we can push it on our social media page. Um, so that's something else that's going on. Uh, we did talk about the SBA loan program that Andy is working on and the significance of that. Uh, one other thing is, um, you know, never let a crisis go to waste. I'm, I'm sure that all of you have received the emails, uh, forum emails about the 5G, uh, stop the 5G rollout because it, you know, we need to save. Um, we're receiving that as well. It's the, it's just try to stop the 5G cellular rollout. Um, I, I guess we should be happy that here we're just getting emails and letters. In England, I understand they're dousing the antennas with gasoline and setting them on fire. So, um, because some people there think that they caused the coronavirus. Uh, 5G, it's a higher frequency. So anyway, we're, we're receiving those. We're aware of them. It is, it, it, again, uh, going with Councilmember Ashbeck's comments about staying in our lanes, the 5G radio frequencies have been vetted through numerous public health agencies. We are in no position to stop it and, and right now we don't have any of the small cells going in town anyway. So it's, it's just a campaign that's going out, kind of a shotgun approach with the same letter sent by a number of people to the same individual. So, um, we're getting those. We're just, we're not doing anything on it. Um, now I, I do need some, uh, want to talk to you about some of the things that are coming up that staff is going to propose and I'm, uh, again, I'm, this whole Director of Emergency Services, it's, I'm very uncomfortable making decisions, you know, without public input and such, definitely without council input. Um,
You'll get used to it. Then you'll forget to ask us. You'll go, I guess I should have done it.
I, I, I don't think I'll ever get used to this situation, but, uh, so I'd like to talk over with some things that we have coming up, um, in this workshop format, although the city attorney may say, I can't get action from you. I can get a nod or a this from you and know where I'm going. So, um, we had an L, we had an LMD election planned for this year to raise the LMD rates in a few of the zones that don't have the automatic increases. Um, we're looking at the reserves. Again, now is not the time to go out for something like that. So we are just going to postpone that. It's, it's not a good time. People are struggling. Um, we, we don't want to further burden them and, and come back and ask them for more money at this point. So, uh, at this point, staff is recommending we just postpone that and we'll, we'll do it next year or something like that. Um, yeah, yeah. I don't see anybody looking at me saying, no, so we're going to do that. Uh, uh, another thing that we've been looking at is, um, uh, and, and, and there's actually a, a health reason to do this is, is just suspending transit fares for this duration of the emergency. Um, we, we'd like to get there permanently, um, but for now it's just, it's, it's less interaction between the, we, we put up some Plexiglas or some plastic screens, you know, between the drivers and the passengers, but just so that they don't have to exchange fares and deal with them there and kind of just move by. So, um, we would, we plan on suspending the transit fares during this emergency. Um,
Will you make that public, Luke?
Yes.
When you make that decision?
Yes, yes. We will. Um, what I'll probably do is, is issue an order and then, um, uh, we'll do the, the press release and the outreach, um, through the social media.
Can we please also reiterate that we have some seats taped off so that there is appropriate social distancing within, um, you know, if you choose to ride one of our buses? Because we are still doing that, is that right?
Chad's, I think, right in that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chad.
So, um, so we're going to do that. Um, one other thing is, so, so this weekend is Easter weekend. Uh, the weather looks like it's going to be, well, last I checked, it's going to be fairly nice. Um, we're, we're, everybody around is closing parks and such. Um, I, at this point, unless council directs me differently, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of closing parks. I like people to get out and about. It's also, we don't have fences around our parks. It would be nominal, you know, we could say parks are closed, but Chief Fleming doesn't have enough officers to park one at every park and make sure nobody goes there. Um, so I'm not necessarily in favor of closing the parks or the trails, um, but we are looking at closing the picnic sites, um, just taping them off and saying they are closed for Easter Sunday. Um, because with all of the other parks in the county being closed, we're concerned that we will get some heavy use at the picnic sites. So, uh, that's one of the things we're thinking about. The other thing is, is we're actually thinking, I hate to do this, but we're looking at closing our park restrooms. Um, and the reason we're thinking about doing that is we cannot keep soap in stock or toilet paper in stock. So it's, it's rather unsanitary. Um, and every time we put toilet paper in there, it gets stolen. If we put soap in there, it gets, the hand-disfectant soap gets stolen. Um, so we're looking at closing the restrooms just because they're becoming, they're certainly a convenience to people that are out using the park, but they're also becoming just a sanitary hazard in themselves.
Would it be possible to wait until after Easter Sunday to do that? And maybe we make an announcement and we ask people to bring their own, you know, either gel, waterless supplies, things like that, let them know, hey, the, the shelters are going to be taped off. You can't use them because this stuff's, they're saying this stays on a surface for thirty-six hours.
Uh, certain, some surfaces, they can stay for days.
Right. Um, so I, 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 and just my opinion, I think that's probably a good idea, but telling people, hey, if you're going to do this, bring your own supplies, please clean up after yourself. Um, I, I, we've been very fortunate, you know, with the people who come to use our facilities. They almost always clean up after themselves, which is a very Clovis thing, but, uh, I'm just, Lynn?
And, and before we, the other thing that we're looking at also is the play structures. Um, we're getting, what we've noticed is that social distancing goes out the window on the play structure. Um, when the kids are all there and the parents are standing there, um, it tends to be an area of congregation rather than dispersment, so we're looking at taping them off as well. So I, I welcome feedback from council on that.
Don't we have those signs on the parks? Though I saw one online from, that's not helping.
Well, it's probably helping, but it's not really completely doing the job.
I would support closing parks, play structures, picnic areas. If you don't want to close the park, I mean, an enforceable closure, I, I don't think it would, I, I agree. Would it be impossible to enforce a closure of a park, but the picnic areas, uh, restroom facilities and the, the play structures, yes, because, because if they touch anything, then, then they were promoting transmission of the virus. Kids, kids are asymptomatic for the most part, as we've learned. So if they're, if they're not washing their hands every time they use it, the next group will contaminate the next group. So, so I don't want to be in that circle of contamination. I'm for, I would agree with what you were, what you were proposing. That's Member Ellen.
Well, I, I want you to have confidence that, um, whatever it is you choose to do, we recognize that it is incredibly difficult for you because no matter what decision you make, there'll be a group of people who will criticize you for it. Um, I think that we, uh, we're kind of in that environment right now where the, where it seems like the grace extended is more narrow than might otherwise be. So, um, so I want you to have confidence that we'll back whatever it is you choose to do. Uh, you know, I'm, um, if you're seeking some input, I would suggest that, uh, you know, the restrooms, if, there are unintended consequences for everything that gets done, right? So if there are some cities and counties around our area which are choosing to, um, close their parks, then one of the unintended consequences is that the parks that are open are going to get more fully utilized. And that creates, um, a greater health hazard for the broader community. So I wish that those people who had made that decision had thought about those unintended consequences, but they did not. So we, because we are much more open in our approach to our parks, as I think Clovis Unified School District is open to how, um, you know, people can utilize what they have there, um, they are, um, you're going, I think they are going to be more greatly utilized. Uh, as far as the, um, us maintaining them being open, I think that they do probably need to be opened. I think that your suggestions about the, um, the picnic, um, areas being shut down certainly makes sense. I think that the signs probably are, um, the best approach. But if you want to modify that to shutting them down, okay, but I'm not sure what that's going to look like. Um, if the restrooms get shut down, I think people are still going to, um, have counted on them being open. And when they are not open, then, uh, they're going to relieve themselves in some other fashion. And I, so I think that might be the unintended consequences of shutting down the restrooms, which I don't think would be a good thing. So, um, I want you to know that I will back whatever it is you choose to do. But being aware of the unintended consequences, uh, my preference is that we not shut down the restrooms. Uh, that we may want to put up signs saying, hey, there is no soap and there's no toilet paper in here before you enter. Just be aware of these things. Um, then perhaps maybe somebody can thoughtfully consider whether they want to utilize that restroom. There's going to be, um, fair or unfair. Um, I mean, I think the guys are going to still want to use that restroom. Um, and so, um, in fair or unfair, uh, guys are the ones who are probably more likely to relieve themselves, um, if it's closed. Uh, so I think that it might make sense to keep, uh, the restrooms open from my perspective. Uh, so anyway, I, I don't know if that provides any guidance for you, and it sounds like you probably get a mixed bag from us up here. But just know that, well, you can be certain of is we'll back whatever it is you choose to do.
One of my concerns about, hey, we're going to close the trails, okay? Well, we're not going to be able to enforce that. Uh, we're going to close all the park spaces, so somebody's going to call the police and say there's people in the park. Okay, we, it, if you make something unenforceable, it promotes disrespect for the law. It puts us in a difficult position and you have people who, I mean, the gotcha people are still out there. They're just kind of holding back sometimes. Um, but if we can tell, if, if we do this, if we leave our facilities open, we should just remind people, bring some, bring some stuff with you, please clean up after yourself. So this, this way they can come out, they can maybe enjoy a brief, nice sunny day, guy, I'm saying it's supposed to be in the seventies, um, and, and limit their exposure to a disease on a, on the day, on a very important religious holiday. I, this is a, it's a very difficult situation. But, uh, what Bob said, Mr. Waylon said, uh, whatever decision you make, we will support. Any other direction from council? Councilmember wanted to.
According to a lot of the reports, I think these next two weeks are the most critical. And so I, I think that it, what you're doing, Luke, is just following in line with, with what is asked of all the citizens of the United States of America to, they're even telling you, don't go grocery shopping if you don't need to at this time. Don't go see, you know, don't go to the pharmacist. And so, um, so I, you know, the mayor said it, I don't know how we enforce it. But at the same time, I think by us taking a position like this, I think it is in the best interest of our entire community. So I'm willing to support what you're doing here.
No, we're not going to, we are not looking at shutting the trails or the parks themselves. It's just the, uh, what we're looking at is the picnic structures, the, the play structures and the, uh, restrooms. Those are the only things. I, I, I think that closing the parks and the trails, one, is completely unenforceable. They're not, they're not gated. And, and two, it's, it, they do offer a great opportunity to get out in, you know, with your family or by yourself or with your spouse and, or, you know, your housemates and go out and get outside and get some fresh air. So I think that's, that's healthy and we're not looking at closing this.
Luke, was there anything more on your agenda for the workshop?
Yes, one other question. Um, so last week when we, uh, discussed the order for the time off, the new COVID time off, um, council had some questions about some of the people that had to use their own leave bank rather than getting administrative time off between March sixteenth and April one. Uh, I, we, Sean had got me the numbers on that. So, um, for the full-time employees, uh, we had a total of eighteen employees that used sick leave during that period because they were sick. Um, some were obviously not COVID, uh, five of them were obviously not COVID. But there were thirteen of them that we don't know, you know, cough, uh, fever, could have been COVID systems. Um, and those people used their sick leave. We had three employees that were quarantined because of travel or exposure to someone who had traveled, um, from outside the area. And they came back, they called the county public health, the county public health said, stay home. Uh, and then we had eight employees that, uh, missed an average of a couple of days to, uh, stay home and take care of a child, either a sick child or a child, just childcare because school was out. Um, so that's, that's the full-time employees. Um, when you look at our extra help, we had, you know, thirty-one went home just because we didn't have any work. When we shut down the rec center and the, the senior center, all those, uh, part-time extra help folks, we had no work for them. Um, we released a couple of interns. We had a, a couple of quarantines, um, for, uh, on the extra help. And then we had seven of our extra help employees that were over sixty-five. So those people didn't get any benefits or had to use their own time if they had any. Um, so, uh, didn't know if you wanted me to, you know, change and give those people a T, administrative time off and restore their leave bank. That was something that was discussed last week and I said I'd come back to you with some, some figures and, and we'd decide. Um, so I just wanted to throw out there.
I know it was mostly Von's issue. I don't know if you had any questions before I asked any?
No, the, I guess I want to just clarity. So is it for the eight that were taking care of children, for the three that were quarantined? Is that pretty much it, Luke? And then the, those part-time that were over sixty-five?
Okay, so, uh, let's just work on the full-time.
Okay.
The full-time because they get benefits. So of the full-time employees, we had eight that had childcare issues, either a sick child at home or just child needed to provide childcare when school was out. We had three that were mandatory quarantines because of travel or exposure. Uh, and then we had eighteen employees that were sick during those two weeks. Uh, five of them were obviously not COVID. Thirteen of them had symptoms that could have been COVID, but they never reached the protocol to be tested or anything. They just stayed home, uh, on sick leave.
So with the, with what we passed last time, would those thirteen qualify for COVID leave? Yes, no?
Uh, yes.
They, they would?
Well, COVID leave doesn't take effect till April one. This will happen.
I'm just saying the category though.
That category, that category, that category would have had COVID leave. Um, the mandatory quarantine.
Uh-huh.
Could have used COVID leave. Uh, and then the childcare, they could have used COVID leave at two-thirds pay. Whereas by using their sick leave, they get full pay.
And, and if we approved it, is it a administrative hard headache to do that? Or is that something pretty easily where we?
Nothing council ever directs us as ever a headache. No, this, this.
Okay, you should always tell the truth. Bottom line.
This is, um, to go back, if we were to go back and change the sixteen employees' administrative time off, it's, it, it's not an overwhelming amount of work. We can do that. If that's council's direction.
I think they already know what I think, so it'll be up to.
Well, if I may, Mayor.
Councilmember Waylon?
Sure, I think Von, your perspective is one of fairness, right? So it just so happens that this starts to be implemented April first, but if we had implemented it a few weeks before, then, um, these people would get, uh, some of the same benefits that the people are going to get after April first. And so, um, you know, what's, what's the big difference then as far as, not from a financial perspective, but what's the big difference from a principle perspective about the date April one? Is it just because that was the date that we decided to have this go into effect? Or was there something that was taking place before April one that, um, we felt like, uh, it wouldn't make sense to give it to them? Um, because my view is that April one is just kind of when we got the policy figured out. And that's how come implementing it on April one was when we chose to do it.
Uh, April one was the, uh, deadline set by the federal government when they passed the law. And what we did is, is we actually, originally I told Sean, I said, well, we'll just make it effective March sixteenth. And the law specifically said that this COVID leave wasn't available until after April one.
I see.
So that if we gave it to them before April one, we'd still have to give them the eighty hours after April one. Um, so, um, that's why we used the April one cutoff. It was to follow that, that federal guidance. Um, but there, there is nothing that would prohibit us from going back and making this administrative time off prior to April one.
Councilman Waylon, if I can explain what my reasoning is, we, we declared the emergency on March sixteenth. So I just wanted us to recognize from the date we declared the emergency. That, that was all.
Okay.
Not that it was anything. So because we declared it, let's honor it and, you know, really make it seem like it's an emergency. We'll help our staff. That's all.
So would the people, um, who would, if we decided to move in the direction of making it effective March sixteenth? Um, I've got two questions on that. Would those people be treated, um, would they be given an added benefit that the people who, um, you know, didn't take any of that time, um, but until after April first, would they be given an added benefit? So somehow they're treated unfairly if they, they didn't take any of that time till after April first?
Um, yes, for those qual, for those classifications. Now, we did put people that either were sixty-five or underlying health, we put those people on administrative time off, um, immediately, uh, on.
Underlying health issues or sixty-five?
Yes, they, they got the administrative time off, whereas people that were off for these other symptoms didn't during the time. So whatever we do, somebody's going to complain that, you know, somebody could say that they're not being treated fairly, but this would not be way out of bounds.
Okay. The, um, and then do we have any idea what the fiscal impact would be to the city for going in the direction of March sixteenth?
Insignificant. It, it's, you know, we're looking at thirteen employees times ten days and it's, or eighteen, you know, it's not a, a big amount. All we would be doing is restoring their sick leave or whatever they took off their leave balances, um, that they would have available at a later date.
Okay.
But it, it's, it's in the big picture. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't want to say I'm just throwing away money, but in, in the big picture, it's not a big sign, it's not going to change that red line on the previous graph. Roundoff error.
That's not what would cause us to be the worst-case scenario.
No, no.
All right, thank you. I, I've got no further questions. Thanks, man.
I have a quick question. After April one, they get eighty hours of COVID leave. Some people took time before April one because of the circumstances which after April one would have been eligible for COVID leave. If, and, and this is hypothetical, obviously, but the people who took their leave before April one, would they be taking it after April one or would things have kind of evened out? So would they be getting eighty plus eighty or would they be getting their, whatever time? Would everybody be kind of equal? I mean, I, obviously it's varies by the individual.
Well, if they got sick again, they could use their COVID time, so they could get the previous time plus this time. And, and again, the, you know, the, the people weren't sick the entire March sixteenth to, right, April one. Um, so they would, they would be getting some time that, that others may not have got. But the same thing is kind of true, as I said, with the people that are over sixty-five or underlying health issues. They had administrative time off until April one and then they got this COVID leave, um, afterwards. Um, so it, it's really a toss-up as to which way we go with it. Um, they would theoretically get a little bit more benefit than somebody who wasn't sick during that time. But you would hope this is where people respect their elders.
Um, Von, this seemed to be your, uh.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
How much of an administrative nightmare would it be? So if somebody chose to take that, um, let's say they took like two days, so, you know, sixteen hours of time. Can their eighty hours post-April first be reduced by?
No, the federal, the federal law says they get eighty hours starting April one. And, and we looked at that because to me it made sense that, okay, well, we're going to give them that eighty hours starting March sixteenth. It's like, well, anything they use before April one doesn't count. So, um, so we couldn't reduce their eighty hours to make up for time they took.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll just share my views. I've got a, you know, obviously I got a, a great deal of respect for Von and his compassion for the employees. I think we all share that. What we don't want is abusive process and frankly, of all the things that have been done, um, the, you know, by the federal and perhaps maybe the state government, there is, there is potential for abuse just in about any government program. That's going to be available, again, and other unintended consequences. Um, and, uh, and I think that the logic of Von stating that, you know, we should give these people the benefit of the doubt starting from March sixteenth, they took that time, um, anticip, you know, not thinking that this COVID eighty would be available after April first. They took this time because at that time they thought that it was the right thing to do because they didn't want to expose their colleagues to, um, any type of illness that they suffered from because it was unexpected that the schools were going to be closing in such short order. Um, and so, um, and then that, those that traveled outside the area and just had to self-quarantine because they got, uh, I mean, I, I mean, they probably shouldn't have traveled outside the area, but I don't know if they did it with a, a carefree attitude or if they did it, um, you know, not knowing that they would have to self-quarantine when they returned. So anyway, having said all of that, I'll, I'll support, you know, what Von was, um, suggesting at the last meeting from my perspective of giving them the benefit. There's no significant fiscal impact to the city and it seems like it makes sense based on the fact that we declared the emergency on March sixteenth.
Any other discussion on this? I think you've received your, that direction. Is there any other, any other items?
Uh.
I don't know if we're in city manager comments. We're still on item twelve?
I'm not going to have any comments after this. Uh, no, I think that, that, that takes care of everything on my list for the workshop for this week. More to come next week.
Okay. So we will, we're done with item twelve? Okay, now we come to city manager comments. And have you, uh, exhausted your comments?
I, I have said all I care to say, so, uh, nothing else to say.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, council comments, uh, Mr. Waylon?
Thank you. Uh, so, um, I really enjoy just working with both staff but also the colleagues, uh, my colleagues on the Clovis City Council, uh, just even during normal times. And, uh, during these particular more stressful times, there is, there is, um, sometimes when people are under a lot of stress, and I'm going to suggest that perhaps all of us in. are under a lot of stress, and I'm going to suggest that perhaps all of us in this room, as well as the people that are listening, but those who have to make tough decisions are under a lot of stress. And that can reduce the amount of grace that is generally extended, as I mentioned earlier. And yet, all of us up here have continued to extend each other's grace during this time. We may be very vocal and, you know, deep down say, oh, it's, I can't believe the person said that. But we don't ever, you know, vocalize it and publicly and, because we recognize that maybe you are, we're a little bit more sensitive during these moments. So, anyway, I just wanted to share with you how much I appreciate all of you and the wisdom that you have brought to these difficult times.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
I talk about you a lot when I'm not here. No, I'm just kidding. That's very nice of you to say. Just kidding, on the phone, I'm not just- I just, I was going to add, I, I really do want to give a shout out to Chad. I think, I don't do social media, as we're all familiar. But I have to say that the things that inspire me are what I see on the Nextdoor app, those sort of small acts of human kindness. So I had a little girl in our neighborhood that went and left me a note in chalk that said, have hope. I mean, that's happening around our city. Some other mom had a post about, there's a book that her daughter was reading called, let's go on a bear hunt or something, I don't know. Anyway, and if anyone wanted to put a stuffed animal in their window, that then they would go on a walk the next day and look for bears. Like, that stuff to me, I mean, and I know it's hard and people have lost their jobs, but those little moments of humanity, I think, are, that's kind of what makes Clovis Clovis. So those, those have been uplifting, even though I'm going to the store with mask and gloves and I'm not supposed to be there and all the rest. But I do think it's, I do think that's very heartwarming. And I do, I think we all, from the jobs we have, interestingly, have, are seeing this through a different lens, right? What it looks like to the criminal justice system and what it looks like to hospitals and what it looks like to law enforcement. It looks different from all those lenses. So maybe that's just a snapshot of the way everyone else is seeing it. So maybe we're the best part of this is we all have a different lens. Not better or worse, just a different lens into it. So, and then you try to look at it from the city's perspective. So, but the staff that are here and kind of keeping it together.
Councilmember wanted to?
Yeah, I, I wanted to report out on Friday, I think Andy and I were on the WebEx conference for the Housing and Economic Development Committee of the League. And so, there were discussions on COVID. There were some discussions on legislation that were coming up, but because of what's been going on, it's been slow. I don't think there has been any position in which the city or on my perspective have been opposed to. Just to let you know, some of the legislation that is interesting is SB 1410, which they, they want to propose to create a, a committee that will hear denials of multifamily projects. So in other words, it takes it out of the court system to this committee set up by Sacramento, which can hear any denials. And so, you know, they're establishing this whole new body. And then if they win, they get attorney's fees, you know, and all those costs as well. And so, hopefully Andy agreed with me. Totally opposed to something like this taking it out of, you know, another jurisdiction of the courts. There's also another SB 795 where, you know, there's potential for actual monies of $2 billion a year for affordable housing projects. And so we'll see where those go. But right now, a lot of it is pending, meaning positions of the league. And so as we get closer, we will move towards that. One of the policies of the committee is to, anything that goes against local control, they, they tend to go and oppose those. And so at least that is something which we are in alignment with. The second big thing was sort of the league's housing production proposal. They talked about long-term and short-term actions or proposals that we will present to the legislatures in hopes of being, working in conjunction with legislatures who will be presenting legislation that will potentially hurt cities. And so, we'll, we'll take a look at that, that, more closely as the, sort of that proposal gets developed. And I really appreciate having the expertise of our staff on these issues since they're so complex and there's so many bills that come up. And I hate to say it, I'm relying on you to read them, to give direction at least. So that way we, we have something that will protect the citizens as we serve in the committee that, that really affect how we do business here in the city. And so, after that, I also wanted to say, great job, Bob, on the video, you know, highlighting the trail. And I think the more you get each of us on with regards to statements, we, we all hit a sector of the community that the community wants to hear from. So for example, I can't reach Lynn's friends, but if Lynn puts out the same message of, hey, go do your census, they will do it. You know, they won't listen to me, they may not listen to Jose, but they'll listen to Lynn. But Lynn's friends won't, you know, my friends won't listen to Lynn. It's like, ah, you know? So, yeah, they should. But I think tho, those messages are interesting. And if you look at the, the number of views, Jose's, mine, and, and the mayor's video's been out there longer, but Bob just came up, he has more views than all of us. You see, so, you know, he's hitting a group of people that, that we're not. I mean, maybe when we share, we get it in our little circle, but from the city's website, you, you had the most views, Bob. You, you're more popular than the three of us over here. So, I, I just want, yeah, keep that up. If, the more we can get, you know, us helping promote that, it'd be great. And the other thing is, I got an email from, I forgot the young lady's name, John, who's working with you for the census, that we are ahead of the curve with responses to the census. We're at 51%. And so that's better than any other city. I think Fresno's only got 43%. And so, you know, let's keep it up and however we can help spread that message, let us know.
Councilmember Flores? I think Lynn's right. We do see things through our own perspective, our own lenses. And it shouldn't be Clovis's job to see it through a medical eyes. It shouldn't be the council's job to see it through medical eyes because she's right, it's not our lane. Our lane is to see it through political eyes, to see it through economic eyes. Because we have to restore the economy of this city. We have to restore normalcy of this city, even if it conflicts with medical advice. So, the doctors, the good doctors, the good scientists may be giving us one advice, but it's not everything in this world. It's not everything that we take into consideration when making our decisions. Because the whole of Clovis is not just what the good doctors say. It's, it's what everybody that makes up this city, this city, this community says. And, and I guess I do see it from the public safety perspective because if this goes on and on and on and our economy fails, public safety will take the brunt of that. And then we have to restore order and we don't want to be there. So we've got to restore the economy. We've got to restore normalcy before chaos comes to visit our city. And then we have to take a public safety kind of response to, to whatever that brings. That's it.
Thank you, Jose. I'd like to compliment staff on their hard work. I, I know that this is your full-time job. I mean, we're, we all have full-time jobs too and kind of to Bob's point and Lynn's point and pretty much everybody's point. We're seeing this from the political part, the city part. I'm seeing it from a economic part at the airport and a public safety part at the airport. So there's a lot of different, different moving parts here that, and to your point, Jose, the good doctors don't agree. And so it puts us in a difficult position about making decisions when even, sometimes the experts don't agree. But today, at noon, I was walking out of the administration building and a sheriff's deputy that I've known for a very long time came driving by. And his wife is one of the owners of my favorite pizza place here in town. And I asked him how business was going and he said they have adapted quite well. They're doing as well as they can, doing the best they can. And he didn't say that with a grimace, he said it with a smile. So I, I'm happy to know that there are businesses out there that have changed their business plan, have adapted and they're, they're zigging when they should zig and they're zagging when they should zag. So hopefully, we can help find some successes and talk about them and help some of the, I don't necessarily want to take their pizza business with somebody else, but maybe we can take that into another business and take that, what we did well or what they did well and celebrate it. Because there comes a point, and if you look at history, in London in 1940, the morale was pretty low. And it came down to politicians and, and the citizens to bolster their own morale sometimes. So we're going to have to celebrate some of these successes. We're going to have to, you know, maybe cry a little bit over some of the issues that we're going to have to deal with. But we're going to come out of this stronger. We just have to kind of look at it that way. And with that, we will go into adjournment. Thank you very much for, for tuning in tonight, folks.